Good evening, everybody. Welcome. My name is Patrick Rainey. I am the Ops Manager at The Gabber. If you've ever called The Gabber, you've probably spoken to me, so hi. We want to thank Caldwell Realty and Insurance for their sponsorship. It allows us to pay the staff for tonight, and for that, we are very grateful. We ask that the audience hold all comments and applause until the end, please. Unlike other forums, we asked voters to send us subjects they wanted explored. Our voters want to hear your overall philosophy for you and how you will serve the citizens of Gulfport. As a reminder, this is not a debate. We hope by using larger, nonpartisan questions, citizens will have a better feel for the candidates in general. Everyone in Gulfport can vote for any ward, and please remember, in 2021, Ward Four was decided by 233 votes, Ward Two by only 130. Also, The Gabber neither endorses nor recommends any candidates. And for now, let's have him introduce your City Council candidates, your moderator, The Gabber News and Politics Reporter, Monroe Roark.
Okay, just a couple more things. We seeded the candidates left to right alphabetically, but the questions will be addressed in as random a format as possible, so no one can say because they, their name is earlier in the alphabet or any, for any other reason, incumbency, whatever, none of that will factor in. Each candidate will get three minutes to make an opening statement, three minutes to make a closing statement. We have five questions, and each candidate will get two minutes to answer that question, and those will be done in a predetermined rotating order. So everybody will answer first one time, everybody will answer last one time, et cetera. For the opening and closing statements, we're going to draw the names out of this bowl. So as I said, two minutes for the questions, three minutes opening and closing statements. We made the questions so they're not drilling down in specific issues, but to give the candidates, as he said, as Patrick said, an opportunity to express their overarching philosophy on how they would lead the city, or try to help lead the city if in the position to do that. And in that regard, each of you is getting an opportunity to tell them how you would best serve in that position, not how horrible your opponent would. So if you mention an opponent, your two minutes are up. And I don't have the, the switch to turn off the mics, but someone does. I don't think that's going to be a problem, but yeah, just, just spend your, spend your time bragging on yourself, and, um, and that'll be, that'll be fine. So with that said, we'll get right to it. I know everybody doesn't want to be here a long, long time. Yes, ma'am?
Where's the timer?
It's right here.
So are you gonna like wait?
I'll, I'll like hold up a five when there's five seconds left. We, I thought we were going to get a timer, but so we're just gonna have to use, use our phones. How appropriate that the school teacher raised her hand first. Okay, so we will begin with Mr. O'Hara.
Candidate for City Council Ward Four. I'm running to serve you. This is not a job. It's service to our community and to you as constituents. I know all the voices, I know all voices need to be, need to be heard and should be heard. I know communication and accessibility is an absolute must. I know that our community must be, must be represented on council and in council, as well as in Tallahassee, which brings me to lobbying our state representatives and senators, so we can seek influence on behalf of our great city of Gulfport. I know we, as constituents, are lacking clarity. We should not have to puzzle piece our way through an answer, no matter how simple or even how hard it is. Clarity is key. Vote for me, Ian O'Hara, for City Council. This is a citywide election. All can vote.
Mr. Simic?
My name is Greg Simic. Start off telling you a little bit about myself. So I was born in New York City. My folks worked at ABC and CBS, and they traveled around a lot, so I did as well. I ended up, you know, by the time I think I was 12, I lived in New York City, suburban New York, lived in Los Angeles, rural Vermont, as well as outside of Massachusetts too. Not outside, outside of, in a suburb of Boston. So I, uh, I had experienced a lot of different, you know, types of environments and cities, and kind of bring that situational, I hope, awareness with me. After, after nine 11, I joined the Marines. I specialized in the electronics on the Super Hornet, F-18s, and that took me around the country, around the world for a tour as well. That was 2000, 2001-ish. So after the Marines got out, went to college, and during that time in college, I started a business, you know. As a Marine, I really got into exercise and loved, felt kind of in love with, with working out, and started a business just kind of on a whim, manufacturing nutritional supplements, and that's ultimately how I wound up here about 10 years ago. We manufactured kind of those supplements that you see in a GNC, whether it's the protein powders, whether it's vitamins, turmeric, ashwagandha, kind of all the, all the, all the, all the new trends and the old standbys as well. I moved to Gulfport a couple of years ago, approaching a couple of years ago. Why did we move? My, my wife and our, our, our son, we moved here because we loved the eclectic, eclecticism. Everyone, whenever we visited, everyone always made us feel welcome. There was so much going on, such a, you know, small place, walkable, you can go to the dog park, you have a beautiful shoreline, clam by you, and, and a really, you know, happening downtown area, all within a walking distance. You can't really find that anywhere else. That kind of brings me to why I'm running in City Council right now. So last year, my son, he was six at the time, he just learned to ride a bike, maybe six months before that. We took him to the skate park. Now, they, they have these, in the skate park, there's this little four-inch kind of mound. When he was driving up and down that, he thought it was the most exciting thing ever, going whee.
Five seconds.
Okay, and anyway, we got removed from the skate park and, uh,
Mrs. Brown?
Yeah, I'm not ready. I gotta put my glasses on. I'm really at a tight spot, like 2:58. Okay, you ready? Now, I would like to thank The Gabber for hosting this event and thanking you for being here. My name is Christine Brown. I'm your council representative from Ward Two and a 35-year resident of the city. I was born in Hawaii to a military family, and aside from living in Colorado when my father was in the Vietnam War, I was, I've always lived on the coast. I'm a graduate of Eckerd College with a BS in pure mathematics and a master's in curriculum and instruction from the University of Florida. Go Gators! I'm in my 31st year of teaching math at Bogus Yega High School to our kids. We are one community of 11,783 people living together in 2.8 square miles. Looking at the census, the 2020 census, I found some fun facts about us. This may come as a shock. They do not count our pets. I'm sad to hear that. Our median age is 59 years old. 3% of us are under the age of five, and I think that number will rise because I actually heard there was a baby in a baby carriage. 6% of us are ages 5 to 20, 4% of us are over 85. We are African-American, American Indian, Alaskan native, Asian, biracial, Hispanic, Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander and white. We are 54% female and 46% male. 9% of us were born on foreign soil, and 8% of us speak a foreign language. We live in 6,263 different households. The median household income is $56,896. Most, 60% of our homes cost between $100,000 and $300,000. 73% of us own our own homes. 43% of us have a bachelor's degree or higher. We descend from every corner of this earth, but most of us, 18%, are of Irish descent. Living among us, we have 1,084 military veterans. 18% of us are disabled and 13% live in poverty. But together, we are one community. We, and, and a community like no other. Where else can you eat breakfast with a lion, have lunch with a nun, walk in a parade with a gecko, and learn your history with a square mullet? Our senior center is dynamic. Our rec center is full of life. The casino is the place to make memories. The stage lights, they're bright. Here at the theater, we have a cutting-edge, award-winning marina. Our library boasts the landmark, nationally-recognized LGBTQ Center, Resource Center. Our shops are bustling, our restaurants are outstanding, and it is so, so sweet to be the envy of other cities. If you've lived here for a year or a lifetime, it's the easiest place to feel like you belong.
Five seconds.
Alone, we are, okay, I just can't finish it. I'll finish it later, don't worry.
Mr. Fedovic?
Oh, Christine, I'm glad I'm not one of her classes. I may have learned, I may have learned better math if I'd been. My name is Michael Fedovic. I'm City Councilman for Ward Four. I have been your councilperson for the last 10 years. My agenda is, I have no agenda. I take each issue as it comes, and I'm very easily accessible. I've had my cellphone number on my business cards from day one, and it's, no one has ever had a problem trying to find me if they have a question. A little about myself personally. I live in six different states, the Cayman Islands and the Cayman Islands. I've lived in Indiana, Michigan, South Florida, South Carolina, Georgia, and parts of California. I'm Vietnam veteran. I spent three years in the Army, a year of Vietnam as a combat veteran. I sit at the moment as your member on the Captain Bay Regional Council Board and on the Executive, Executive Budget Board for the Captain Bay Regional Council. I was a past member of the PSTA. I have an honorary doctorate from the, I have a Bachelor of Science degree from the University, excuse me, Georgia State University. I have a honorary bachelor from the Catholic University of New Spain of Miami, and I am now the honorary chancellor of the Catholic University of New Spain of Miami. I'm a published poet. I'm a member of the Andy Anderson Port Legion, or American Legion, rather, I'm sorry. I have been a small business owner, an entrepreneur, a restaurateur, and I've done numerous jobs around, all over the place. That's really about all I've got. I've got three cats, just for the record. I'm not, I don't, I don't have dogs, but I do have three cats, Hemingway, Frida, and Bukowski. So they, they did make me say that I would throw them in as a quick, quick shot if I had more time. And that's it. I would appreciate your vote. I'd like to continue doing what I've been doing. I think we're, I think Gulfport's on a good road. It needs tweaking from time to time, and it does not need changing. Again, I appreciate your vote. My name is Michael Fedovic. Thank you.
Mr. Butler Jones?
My name is Christopher Butler Jones. Many of you know me as Jonesy. I am a proud lifelong Gulfport resident. I went to Gulfport Elementary School. I went to Bogus Yega High School. I've been here my entire life. The reason I'm so proud to live in Gulfport and call it my hometown is here I am, a man raising my nephew, my African-American husband. We still have neighbors who look out for us. I'm able to be a strong voice for the community. It's amazing acceptance of people the way that they are. It's a rarity in Florida, even in Pinellas County nowadays. This is why I'm running for office. I want to make sure that Gulfport remains a place that is accepting, unique, caring, of course, weird as well. I want to make sure that voices are heard and people are respected. I think it's very important that the city starts looking into and working more on affordable housing. We're pricing out the people that have built Gulfport, made Gulfport what it is. I mean, at the same point in time, our own police officers can't even afford to live in Gulfport at this time. Of course, drugs, homeless, mental health issues, more how we handle as a community and what we can do together. Bringing more festivals and activities that are family and kid-friendly. Gulfport has some amazing activities, but a lot of them are not something that you would bring a young child in your family to so much nowadays. One of my biggest concerns speaking to the people is there definitely needs to be a lot more clarity and openness from the city to the citizens and the citizens to the city as well. I've learned that a lot of people feel left in the dark, and unfortunately, like their voices are left unheard. Being born and raised, I also know that the artists have played a huge hand in building the city into who we are today. So it'd be nice to give them a little bit more of a voice in the community. Overall, just more unity, building a bridge and a better rapport with the citizens and the employees of the city from the police, the fire department, public works, city hall workers, and all.
All right. You'll have a two minutes to respond to each of the following five questions. So question one. Tell us how you think Gulfport's history influences its future. We'll start with Mr. Fedovic.
One more time on that one, please?
How do you think Gulfport's history influences its future?
Well, history is always, the base of history just tells you where you've been. The future is where we're going. So I don't think that the history incites why we have a, we've got a somewhat of an interesting history from what we became and what happened in the 50s and 60s until what we are today. I think we're on the right track. I think we've moved right, we're moving forward. We've become a very diversified city. As Councilwoman Christine Brown pointed out, with all the different ethnic backgrounds we have and the different languages, the people from around the world. As more and more people come into Gulfport, you have new ideas and new attitudes. And I think we're on the right track to continue moving forward and hopefully put our history in the past but not forgotten.
Mr. O'Hara?
Gulfport's history, it's, it's, uh, the history of Gulfport is positive and negative, just like the history of the United States. And I don't see that we have to revisit our past to go forward into our future. We can look to our past to understand our future. And we have a great future ahead of us. Like Christine said, the diversity issue, the fact that we are, we are getting younger, and the fact that our median income has increased, all of those are very, very positive. And, and that's about looking forward, not looking back.
Mr. Simic?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, maybe I'm not as prepared as I should be. I had purchased, well, ordered the Gulfport History Book, which just, you know, covers the last 100 years of Gulfport. It's been out of print, I guess, and waiting to be published. So unfortunately, I don't kind of have that, that whole perspective of the history, although I have heard some kind of cool, fascinating, well, maybe not cool, but fascinating rumors that Gulfport in the 80s was a biker, a Hell's Angel depot for smuggling drugs in. That certainly adds to the character of Gulfport, but that's not really the character that I want to address moving forward. I think, you know, where my platform is, it'd really be addressing and finding a balance between retaining the history, retaining the identity of Gulfport, and, you know, looking at, looking at the future. And we are in a kind of a precarious situation. I believe that St. Pete has just experienced phenomenal explosive growth, and as a byproduct, Gulfport is a direct adjacent suburb, really experiences both the good and the bad. Some of the bad is the affordability issues that has been mentioned on this stage. And, and, and in my opinion, I think, you know, we're seeing a little bit of, well, that affordability issue is just, you know, as a result of the explosive growth. And, and, and how do we address all of these kind of residuals from the growth of the area while retaining the, the, the identity of Gulfport is really, really, really important and really finding that balance, and that's kind of where I lay in terms of, in terms of, well, finding the balance, so.
Mr. Butler Jones?
I think Gulfport's history is very important. I mean, especially if you look back in the very beginning of, not very beginning of history, sorry, but you go back to when, I mean Africans-Americans weren't welcomed in Gulfport. Yes, it was a biker town back in the 80s. I mean, when I was growing up and a little kid, you definitely didn't want to walk down to a Matties in the streets down there. A lot of people would have been far away from there. And remembering that history and how far we've come and what this city has built with the citizens, that's very important. So remembering where we came from and what it taught us is what builds Gulfport is a very unique city. I think that's one of the greatest things about Gulfport is it has had, all of those different paths of life have all come together and built this unique, weird collective group of people. And I think remembering that and building off of that is very important, and that's part of bringing more unity to the city and the more diversity, bringing a lot more groups together. As welcoming as Gulfport is, Gulfport can still be very cliquey at times. So it's building that bridge and getting everybody back together a little bit more as a family like we all are.
Mrs. Brown?
Thank you. Can you repeat the question?
Tell us how you think Gulfport's history influences its future.
Okay, so I was on the museum board for like forever, and there's some great history in there. My, I'm married to a sixth-generation Gulfportian, direct descendant of the founding family. My daughter is a seventh generation. So when I'm with my husband, we say, we don't say, oh, that's the, the drunken taco, that's the Murphy's Drug Store from when I was a kid, when my husband was a kid. So I, I do live that history because I hear about it and, and the people that we surround ourselves with, the old Gulfport fishermen, we talk about the history a lot. There is good and bad history in every town, and we, we want to move past that and become more diverse, of course. Some things that I love about our history that we still have today and I think are important to still cherish are things like the Scout Hall. You can see there's some construction going on there because we're trying to preserve it. Have you ever looked at the brick streets? You can see either four fingerprints on them or a thumbprint from all the, from the people that made the bricks and put the bricks in the road. That just fascinates me every day when I go out to my mailbox and I see that because it, it's like they're here. Our, our, our people from way back are here with us still, and I want to preserve the history of our town. I want to, to reimagine us but not change our history, change our historic buildings. I want to preserve. So that is my goal, to incorporate the preservation of where we've been, the museum and all the history that's in there, and move forward while we take all that with us and learn and grow from it.
Question number two. What have you done as a private citizen, not as an elected official and not as a candidate, as a private citizen to improve the city? Mr. O'Hara?
Well, as a private citizen, I've, I've participated in all kinds of volunteer organizations. I am involved in the library, I'm involved in the Blueberry Patch, I'm, I, I go to practically every restaurant in town. I'm very active within the community. My wife and I have hosted many events for some of our local families. We had an event, the Ukrainian event, and raised money for a family that was right here, moving right here to Gulfport. I don't know, there, there, there are just so many small things I'd never even thought of. And I think now what it is for me is I want to give back in a bigger way, participate in a bigger way, where there is no thought to the process. It is. In reference to the diversity of history, I really like the concept of retaining our, our historic buildings and our historic streets. And maybe that's something that can be dealt with when you all elect me.
Mr. Simic?
Sure, this question kind of gives me the opportunity to finish actually the story I was sharing earlier. So why am I running was because, you know, I took my six-year-old, who had just learned to ride the bike to the skate park. There's that little four-inch mound over there, and, you know, he's going up and down and going whee, and it's the most exhilarating thing, I guess, when you're six years old, to go up and down a four-inch mound. Anyway, it was, skate park was probably almost all empty, and there was an employee from the rec center who came out there and rudely admonished us and told us to get off the park because bikes weren't allowed. There was no one over there. It was safe. It was, it was me and him, and, you know, I was like, this is bizarre, okay? And, you know, he said, bikes aren't allowed over here. So I started looking more and more into it and asked the city to actually, you know, do, try and do something about this because to me, it wasn't fair. So that, you know, in, in debt, in debt to the city, the city did conduct an investigation, a study, they said, for two weeks, allowing bikes onto the skate park to see, you know, what kind of safety issues there were, if any, if it was too crowded. They did a two-week study. The results came back fine. They said there was no impact whatsoever on safety, no impact whatsoever on, on, on conflict, which I think they were a little bit concerned about. But we're still not going to open the skate park up to kids. And to me, that didn't make any sense. And when I, when I started investigating more and more and more, and so how does that relate to the question is, you know, advocacy? I'm, I'm, I'm trying to advocate for the, you know, for, for the children and for a more inclusive environment and against kind of rules that just don't make sense to me. And I was running into, you know, the, the expression, you know, that's the way we've always done things. We don't want to change. Again and again, with, with the skate park and then also with other advocacy that I've done in regards to maybe street design and a few other things. What time, how much?
Five seconds.
All right, well, I don't have a chance to describe the street, street design advocacy, but I'm available after to chat about that if anyone's interested.
Mr. Butler Jones?
Um, it's, I've always been active with the citizens of the city. I have been, this is a lot more of me deciding to step up and finally give back to the city as a whole. I've always tried to be the neighbor that when the hurricanes are coming, you know, that you can count on me. We're going to be there. We're going to help you get prepared. If you're not feeling well or your mom had surgery, don't worry because we're going to drop her off soon, and we're going to be there for her and check on the neighbors and help bring a voice to the people that may feel like they don't have a voice. And that's a lot of what my platform and the reason for running for City Council is, is to bring in that voice back to the citizens, the people that feel neglected, getting out there and doing a lot more and being a lot more supportive to the city that has put so much into me. I mean, it's one of those that it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it definitely took a village to raise me. So Gulfport was there for me my entire life, so it's time for me to do something for them. We did start and did the Gulfport Support Black Lives Matters and tried to do a little bit with that group and get a little bit of awareness out there. And so we've done a little bit, but it's time to do a lot more, and that's why I'm here now, so.
Mrs. Brown?
I gotta put my glasses on. So when I moved here 35 years ago, my husband's family was always volunteering. So they're like, okay, come on. And now I became a volunteer firefighter. I was a volunteer firefighter for the city of Gulfport for 10 years before they had a paid department. I was, I was on a historical society board because I lived across the street from the museum, and Judy Ryerson says, oh, you're a math teacher? You're going to be our treasurer. So that's where it started. I ended up as the president of the museum. I worked, I volunteered as a pension board member for the Gulfport Fire Department Pension Board, which gives me a unique opportunity to know about our pensions in our, in our city. I served on the Most Holy Name of Jesus Catholic Church Finance Council. I was on the millennial committee back when everything was going to like explode and our hair was going to catch on fire. We created this big party for the millennial. Nothing happened, by the way. I guess you probably know that. I did go on the police, Citizens Police Academy, which was absolutely fabulous. If you get a chance to, to go to that academy, put on by our police department, do it. I was on the Charter Review Committee twice because once is not enough. The Code of Ordinance Review Committee I was on with Mayor Sam Henderson. I was a Girl Scout leader in our Scout Hall. I'm still a member of the Community Emergency Response Team that we created after, after they did away with the volunteers and got a paid department. So we're here to help you in the case of an emergency. I do, I've done clam by you cleanups for years. I am on the Lions Club right now, and everything else is after I became on City Council. Oh, I could finish if I have time. Can I finish my?
Seven seconds.
Never mind. Good job. It was a good idea.
Mr. Fedovic?
First came to Gulfport, I got involved, I got appointed actually by Mayor Henderson to the now-defunct Economic Development Committee before I got on City Council. I also was able to, while on council but outside of council, was able to negotiate with Rachel from the senior center with one of the box with one of the box grocery stores to give us food every month uh, as needed by the senior center. And my understanding is that's still an ongoing situation. Um, when the Ukrainian war broke out, I was uh, uh, very taken back by the situation and wanted to do something. Um, consequently, I did put a box in the, in city hall, again, outside of city council uh, to try to uh, collect goods and, and certain things for the Ukrainians to get rid of the Ukrainian church, et cetera, et cetera. In fact, they, they didn't even want any more, but I convinced them that uh, I could not give it all back, so they took it for me, for me. Um, I've been a big supporter of the businesses in Gulfport, both as a patron and while on council, but at the same time, trying to balance the difference between neighborhoods and businesses and how it works in a, in a small town. I, I, again, when I first got on Gulf, came to Gulfport, I got involved in trying to save dispatch, which unfortunately we did not do a very good job because for obvious reasons it's now gone. But I did try to work to preserve the dispatch in that situation. And whenever, and whenever needed, I'm usually at the sandbag place, filling sandbags for people whenever needed, uh, when it runs down there as much as possible. When people, when we have storms brewing. So I try to do a little things all, all, on a regular basis. Um, and I, again, I'm always out in the streets, so I'm easily, easily found.
All right. Question three. How would you describe the job description of a city council member? Mr. Simic.
Uh, yeah, I think that can be summarized really as uh, hold on, my brain's not really working today, it's been a long day. Let me think for a moment. I think the government's really responsibility and role is nudging uh, society forward and uh, to, to really, to really kind of self-develop. Um, and uh, um, yeah, I think that's kind of a good, good summary is I think the role of governments not to really control it or not to really plan it, but really to, to nudge, nudge through the use of incentives um, society forward into uh, really, you know, an in- inclusive uh, inclusive direction that pro, you know, that raises the overall income level, raises our quality and standard of living and um, um, creates a, 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 an environment where businesses can grow and thrive. And how does that really relate to um, you know, this position specifically? Is? Uh, this is a good question. How does it relate to this position specifically is I think that, you know, what I would do is really help bring some le- leadership values, uh, or my leadership values would really help, I think, um, and, and be focused on, on nudging, uh, nudging Gulfport forward and trying to, again, bring the balance between the history and adapting to the change and the twenty-first century challenges without being, without, without being too, without, without being controlling and kind of just in the background.
Mr. Butler Jones.
Can you repeat the question? I think I got confused, I'm sorry.
How would you describe the job descrip- description of a city council member?
I mean, a lot of your job description is obviously working with the city, the public works, the fire department, the city hall, making sure that we have running water and things are running smooth. And then a lot of it is the voice of the city, getting out there and doing the work and talking to the citizens, finding out what the citizens want and what the needs are. And being able to explain that to people and obviously you guys aren't always going to get the perfect answer that we want. We're not going to be happy twenty-four-seven, so finding that balance to be able to make majority of people happy and at least understand the clarity and what's going on here is the biggest part of it. We're in a city manager type of government, so there is a lot that you're limited on what a city council does versus what a city council doesn't do. But there is a lot that you can do with city council to make sure that the city runs smooth, runs together as a well-oiled machine. We're not here to rewrite the history of Gulfport or there's a great foundation that's been laid in front of us. It's time to just bring new ideas and help it grow.
Mrs. Brown.
Thank you. So we are, the five of us up there are collegial body, five different people, five different backgrounds, five different ex, life's experiences, all working together to make Gulfport a great place. I say we're doing a good job working, doing the work of the people. Uh, first, of course, our citizens' concerns, but the biggest thing we do is we have a twenty-five to thirty million dollar budget. We have a full-service city, we have police, fire, public works, library, rec center, uh, senior center, marina, playgrounds, beach, theater, casino, biz, uh, community development, twelve thousand residents, sixty-eight miles of roads and thirty-two miles of unpaved alleys. Um, we have recreation fields and more than a dozen uh, buildings to maintain on a day-to-day basis and we still manage to put on activities and um, several events per year, some of them recurring. We, and then we work through um, special projects, which we fund through Penny for Pinellas and capital improvement projects. But we, we through, do this with a great staff and fiscally responsible conservative budget that's balanced every year. We, we work with the, with the city manager on a step-by-step uh, road to get to the final budget every year. Um, and my job is to safeguard our unique um, identity as a full-service city. For a city of our size to be full-service, crazy, crazy important and very rare for us to have all of the services that we have. The city does a great job, we have great staff and our job is to make sure that the budget gets through every year. Aside from the day-to-day taking care of the residents that call or visit or have needs, um, the budget is the biggest thing that we do.
Mr. Fedovic.
Thank you. Um, one of the responsibilities of sitting at city council is more than just sitting on a dais, uh, two meetings or three meetings a month, whatever we, we have. Uh, it is out there networking and out there representing the city uh, on various boards like I have done uh, around the city, around the county and around the state. Um, you know, I always wear my pin from Gulfport wherever I go to let people know who we are and what we are and where we are. Uh, more importantly, where we are at times. It's also listening, listening to the citizens, listening to citizens, supporting the citizens and, and what they, what they're trying to accomplish. They don't always agree. I mean, there are times that people have uh, told me what they don't like and uh, or do like and I don't always agree with them and vice versa. We do it in a civilized way and, and that's the way it should be. Uh, supporting staff, uh, we have a great staff, they work very hard and um, un- unfortunately, sometimes they get um, misused by, by people, but it's out there supporting the staff whenever possible or all the time, I should say. Um, I've sat on numerous boards, I've always, I've always been a uh, an active, a neighborhood activist. In fact, the years ago when I lived in Atlanta, um, I started a uh, Neighborhood Federal Credit Union. I was the first president and co-founder of a, of the third Neighborhood Federal Credit Union, the city of Atlanta at one time. And was a, a member, uh, and the president of a neighborhood association about the size of Gulfport. So I, I, I've been doing this for a long time in many ways, uh, in many different states and many different ways of doing it. Uh, which brings me back to my diversified background. I've had numerous types of jobs and uh, uh, background situation, which gives me an opportunity to work with people from all different walks of life and of, of both racial, economic, religious, et cetera, et cetera, and respecting people as they talk. Thank you.
All right. Mr. O'Hara.
Yes, um, well, the simple part is the attending the meetings, fielding the phone calls, the emails, the text messages, uh, supporting the staff, meeting with the city manager uh, and bringing the issues forward. But number one, it's not a job, it's service to our community. Um, and yes, absolutely keeping the budget in the black, keeping the balanced budget, keeping our uh, our, our city in a full-service city mode. And yes, hoping when I win, that I sort, I, I sit on some of those boards for the county and the state. I'm a, a daily user of PSTA. I enjoy the PSTA and I would like to participate on their board. I, I tried as a private citizen, but uh, someone else ended up getting that spot. Um, anyhow, the point is, is that, yes, it is not a job, it is service to our community and there are many, many thing, many, many more things that I don't know what is being done and I'd like to know what those things are so I can do them.
Question four. How do you feel about the overall demographics in Gulfport? And if there's something you don't feel good about, how would you change it? Mr. Butler Jones.
I feel like we have a very wide variety of Gulfport, our people in Gulfport, I should say, our demographics are very nicely mixed. Um, one thing that I would like to change because it's bringing the families into Gulfport a little bit more. I've talked to quite a few people that said the only reason that they moved to Gulfport is they looked at our school systems and where our school ratings were and said, why would anybody want to raise their kids there? Let's move there, we don't have to deal with children. That's great, yes, there's always going to be some people that don't want to live around children, but how do you expect the city to grow? If we're not moving in citizens that are building families and putting down their roots here and making lifelong commitments to our city. And you get a lot of people that are coming in in snowbirds and all that, it's wonderful, but we need a lot more family-oriented stuff in Gulfport. That's one of my big things is bringing family back to Gulfport. I also, real quick, because I know I still have time, as a city council member, one of our important jobs is also dealing and working with the businesses in Gulfport and making sure that our businesses are thriving, our businesses are happy. People want to bring business to Gulfport and have new fresh ideas coming in all the time. That is a major part of our job as well. Sorry that I forgot to mention that.
Mrs. Brown.
Boy, did I answer that question with my opening, didn't I? Wow, our demographics are pretty cool. A couple of things I didn't get to say is four percent of our, of, uh, our people that are over eighty-five, that's three hundred and sixty-nine eighty-five-year-olds or older. Couldn't you imagine what it's like to listen to them and their stories? That is great, okay. This is the end of what I was going to say. So alone, we are experienced, educated and vibrant individuals, but as one collective group, we embrace pride, our hearts are full of passion, we are kind, generous and caring to one another and that is what the true definition of a community is. Um, is there room for growth in our diversity and our demographics? Sure, sure there is. Um, I think it's important to note that I've been at Bogie for thirty-one years, I'm teaching the children of children. So I know that the families are staying here and rooting themselves here because I'm teaching their children now, which is really cool. Will not teach grandchildren of chan, of children, not, not doing that. So I, I don't, I hope I'm not here that long. So um, I think we have a great group of people, we, we could, um, oh, let me go to that page because I have a couple of things to say. You can't stop the timer, can you? Sorry, 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 okay. So diversity is, um, I think, part of the question that you're asking. It incorporates acceptance and respect for everyone's characteristics. Here we have people of all ages, races, nationalities, identities, abilities and varieties of life's experiences, all living together. Um, could we increase our diversity? Yes, we could. It could start from a place of respect for all stu, all citizens. And uh, do, do our communities that members feel a sense of belonging? Do they feel safe? Do they feel valued? Um, increasing our density is kind of an organic thing. Uh, and uh, uh, by the way, seventy percent of Bogus City Aga High School students are minorities now.
Mr. Fedovic.
Do that one more time, please, the question, not my name.
How do you feel about the overall demographics in Gulfport? And what would you change, if anything?
I wouldn't change anything, I would like to see us increase things but not, not decrease anything. I think we're on a good track, I mean, we've got a quite diversified, we're getting, we're quite diversified and we're getting more and more diverse. And I think as, as Christine pointed out, we've got more and more people who've lived around the world who've come from all, all different walks of life, who've also had different racial backgrounds, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the diversity is fantastic, it's, it's, diversity brings new light and new ideas to, to a city. Uh, I'd like to see more people get involved with it from the di- different diversified backgrounds, but that's something that seems to be more organic. You can't go knocking on people's doors and saying, please come downtown. Our diversification is also shaped by the fact that we, uh, yesterday we raised the Black History Flag. We've raised the LBGQ uh, Q uh, flag uh, of that month. Um, these are things that are changing on our organic situation with, with the diversification of, of the neighborhoods and, and the way the city goes. Each neighborhood is a tad different in Gulfport and, and I like the, going back with Joe D. said real quick, I think we're getting more and more families coming back into Gulfport. I think in the fifties and sixties, um, we had a lot of families here, they moved away because of whatever reasons were. But we're getting more and more, I could tell you in my neighborhood, I've got a lot of kids now in my neighborhood that are going to Bogie, going to the elementary schools, whether it's either locally or outside of Gulfport. Um, so we are getting more and more kids back in. If you look at Thomason Park, which I was able to get in with the playground situation in Thomason Park, uh, that's being used on a regular basis, both the exercise equipment, the uh, for the kids, et cetera. So I think that we're moving in the right direction. As time goes by, we'll see what happens in the future.
Mr. O'Hara.
Oh, very simple, demographics are actually perfect. Um, yes, I think that we should have more families, but that again is up to those families to move here. And we, we do live in a community that is a cradle-to-grave community. So hopefully myself as being the second uh, generation moving here, not a second generation born here, maybe my grandchildren will reside here in Gulfport. It's where it needs to be.
Mr. Simic.
Can you just rephrase, can you phrase that question how you worded it, please?
How do you feel about the overall demographics in Gulfport and what would you change if you wanted to change anything?
Sure, sure. Um, you know, to address the question of demographics and, 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 and diversity, um, one of the most interesting things about campaigning has just been meeting really every one of you and finding out all about, all about your backgrounds. I've spoken with the former police officers, former attorneys, former counselors, former, or, or current, current, current and former teachers, uh, everything, and that really speaks, I think, a lot to the really exciting uh, diversity and demographics. One of the tenants kind of of my campaign has also been about kind of uh, 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 looking and, and trying to increase that multigenerational diversity. Um, and this encompasses and really uh, all, all the generations from baby boomers to Gen X to millennials to Gen Z to what the youngsters are called now, the newborns are, are Generation Alpha. And um, and, and, and that's been really a, a core focus of mine to, to really increase that kind of family uh, uh, element of it. And, and you know, there's a biological reason for that, it wasn't just till three hundred years ago or so that we just got all split up from a nuclear unit. Um, you know, throughout thousands and thousands of years, we've been all those generations in one small community and that's really, you know, the most healthy place to, to support a child and uh, 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 from, from zero to a hundred uh, in age. So uh, uh, that, that, that has been a tenant of mine and, and I did pose some salute or some ideas on how to kind of inculcate that multigenerational diversity and, and, and uh, um, some of that has been, you know, targeting uh, uh, through the events, um, uh, the, with a, with marketing material. Um, another, another thing has been uh, increasing the events, whether it's CrossFit, which I try to get um, a, a big CrossFit competition on the beach.
I'm going to make a slight change here, the candidates have done an excellent job of going with the flow. We were told by folks when they told us we'd use the theater that they would provide a timer and they did not. It's not my intention to do this, but you guys have all handled it very well and it's been equally frustrating for all of you. So I'm going to give you a thirty-second warning instead of five, I probably should have done that at the beginning. So, last question. How would you describe Gulfport's representation at the county, state and federal levels as far as taxpayers getting the most bang for their buck? And you can be specific as you like, Mrs. Brown.
Oh, you're going to have to say that again. Please.
All right. How would you describe Gulfport's representation at the county, state and federal level as far as taxpayers getting their money back here to be used locally? Taxpayers getting the most bang for their buck. You can be as specific as you like.
Okay. All right. I got this. Uh, I, I wanted to point out a cup, did you start the timer? I'm ready.
Yes.
Sorry, I wanted to point out a couple of things from before. It's interesting, if you look at the twenty-twenty census, they actually have the number of women that are fertile to have babies if we wanted to increase our, our density of children. If we wanted to increase our, our density of children, just as you say. And another thing for Phyllis, ten percent of our veterans are women. Thank you, Phyllis. Um, we do have, we got one point five million dollars from Representative Linda Cheney for our, um, our senior center rebuild, which we're very excited about. We have a, a, uh, a group of people working on fundraising. We want to build a state-of-the-art senior center. Um, we want to replace some buildings in our city. We're starting with the senior center. So much goes on there that they really deserve a bigger, better space. So we do work with the state people. Um, we have ARPA money that we have spent. We had six point one million dollars in ARPA money and we used it for so many wonderful things. Uh, private waters, uh, sewer lines for private pro- uh, replacement. Premium pay for our workers that worked through COVID. Utility capital improvements. We did manholes. Um, Mayor Sam Henderson brought up a COVID gateway, um, grant for businesses to help them through COVID and as well, um, another grant for our residents to go spend money at our business. That was thirty seconds. Woo, we're gonna get, um, lift station improvements, Wi-Fi projects, act, um, electronic water meters. So I could keep going, but we do have a great relationship with our county folks, with our state folks. Um, we work together with other cities. We are bringing in, we're working with Treasure Island right now to bring in a homeless coordinator to help with our homeless population. We're sharing the cost with them. So we do have outreach. We do work with us. Thank you.
Mr. Fedovic.
The, um, one of the advantages of sitting on various boards and being active around the county and, um, having friends or having acquaintances in the state legislature is you get to network with these people. You go to organization meetings, you go to events, you, uh, whatever, and you work with them and you talk to them about what we need in Gulfport, what we don't need in Gulfport and try to work with them regardless of party. Uh, this is the, we are a nonpartisan race and, and I try to keep it nonpartisan all the way up to state level whenever possible. Um, as was pointed out by Christine Brown, uh, Linda Cheney, uh, our state representative was able to bring us one point five million dollars. Uh, and we're trying to get more money. We just got, we just received money on a state, on a, uh, national level for the senior center. I believe it was one point five million or one point seven million, uh, for the senior center for, um, from the, uh, from Congress when, uh, what Congressman Chris was in office. Um, so that, that's how you do things. You, you go out there and you network, you talk to these people, you work with them and you get to know them on a, on a personal basis as well as a professional basis. And consequently that spills over to try to help the city at all times. Whenever I'm outside of Gulfport, uh, outside the city limits of Gulfport, I'm always representing the city in one form or another. In fact, uh, it's probably annoying to some people I go to lunch with because I always ask people where they live. Uh, just to see if they live on the side of the city and if they do, what do they think? So, uh, anyway, that's all I got to say, I guess.
Mr. O'Hara. Mr. O'Hara.
Um, I absolutely agree with what Christine said. All of those projects are absolutely necessary. Um, and all of those projects are happening. Uh, I believe that Gulfport though is not getting a fair shake, uh, from Tallahassee. Uh, nor do I believe that any other small or large municipality, uh, is getting a fair shake. Um, we need to be strong. We're nine thousand five hundred voter, nine thousand five hundred plus strong voters. And, um, we're being stymied by Tallahassee. Um, in very small things and very large things. Number one is that, uh, the state legislature, uh, is not employing, not allowing us to employ home rule, which is forcing our hands into places where we shouldn't, we don't necessarily want to be. Um, they may not, uh, they may not hear us, uh, may not even listen, but we need to be there present. We need to make them accountable. And it's not, you know, the current, current council does the best job that they possibly can when they're up there. The key is, is that we have to be there more. I know that we have a lobbyist, we have a paid lobbyist. But there's a lot more to it. Um, and this also involves community engagement.
Thirty seconds.
Individuals who are having issues and it revolves or is, is the problem, it, the problem is actually coming from Tallahassee, not coming from the dais here in, in Gulfport.
Mr. Simic.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think, uh, so the question is, you know, what kind of representation does Gulfport have at, at higher levels? I really think Gulfport gets, gets bullied. Um, especially by, you know, I'm going to talk mostly to, to Saint, you know, at the county level. I think Gulfport really gets bullied by, by St. Pete. Um, you know, just as a first example, the accessibility to Gulfport stinks. I mean, we have Twenty Second Avenue, which is one of the worst roads. Uh, it's super narrow. There's a lot of traffic. It is hard to get in and out from two seventy-five. And St. Pete controls all of the access to Gulfport, all of it. You cannot get to Gulfport without going through St. Pete. And I really think the, the road and the accessibility issue is a major issue. And we, we, you know, how, how long has Twenty Second and Forty-Ninth have? Yeah, I, I understand Gulfport controls ha- or, 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 or paves half of Forty-Ninth. But how long has those roads been so awful? Uh, that's just one, one example. Uh, uh, you know, I think even looking further back in history, look at the sewage debacle from twenty, what was it, twenty sixteen? We were, uh, their response was really so much as a pushover to, to St. Pete. Oh, okay, St. Pete will fix it. St. Pete will fix it, you know, we're, we, we need, we need to be stronger to some of these forces. And, you know, I think I've said over and over again, at least on my campaign, that I think so much of the negative effects are, are, are spillover effects from St. Pete's growth. And we're not getting any money from any of these people to really help cure the street homeless, or not cure, but help, uh, help resolve street homelessness and affordability issues, which are all a result of St. Pete, uh, St. Pete's growth. And, 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 you know, I think it's really time that, that, and, and this has been, uh, one of the tenants of my campaign too. We, we need it, we need a David to the Goliath of St. Pete and the county. We need, we need to stand up for these bullies. To, to the.
Five seconds. Mr. Butler Jones.
I think our city has been pretty well represented for the most part throughout the years from our current city council to the past city council. Gulfport has gotten a lot done with help from the assistance of the state in Tallahassee. And I mean, our parks and just roads, there's a lot that the city council has done. But yes, they could also do better. There's time, I mean, our police officers are the second lowest paid in the city right now. There's a lot more. I'm sure that we could get help currently. I think we get a little over six thousand dollars as a sign-on bonus for our police officers from Tallahassee. I mean, we get something, but when that sign-on bonus is gone, what's the reason to stay when you can make at least ten, fifteen thousand more somewhere else? I'm sure that's the same. We're down employees in city hall. We're down six or seven police officers right now. We are missing at least two paramedics, I think it is. So I mean, we're definitely short-staffed and yes, we have an amazing budget and it balances. But if we're that short-staffed, then obviously we need to bring in some more income and some more help from different areas. So I think that there is a lot more that can be done, but we also do have some strong ties already with our city council and our representatives and local representatives. So I think the city does a great job, but we can always do better.
All right. You'll have three minutes for your closing argument, a closing statement, say. Um, and as long as you don't refer to an opponent, you can talk about whatever you like.
I misspoke when I said we got one point five million dollars from Linda Cheney. Councilmember Fedovic is correct. It came from the federal government from Charlie Chris. I'm sorry about that.
All right. And once again, I'll say something when you have thirty seconds left. Mr. Simic.
Sure. So I know I'm the underdog. I don't have the roots here. Um, you know, my, my roots are, are far, far more minimal than, than, than the others. Um, but you know, I think what I would bring to the table is a fresh perspective. Um, although it might not seem it tonight due to a long week, but, uh, I, I, I'm really up to date on, 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 on ki- kind of some, a lot of these policies. Um, you know, I've had multiple letters published within the GABR, um, uh, stating my kind of position and advocacy of, 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 uh, of, of position, uh, of, of, of issues and, and positions. Um, and you know, I, I, I don't want to break the rules, but they were written a little bit different in the email, which said you cannot address candidates in the questions. And then it, I, I think they were, they were changed. But really what you have now in the council is a, a voting block of, 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 of three folks who always vote the same way, nine out of ten times they vote the same way. Um, and, um, uh, and, and most of the time it's the city staff recommendations. And I feel like a lot of times that's the tail wagging the dog. Um, and what I would bring is a, a fresh perspective and a new way of looking up the, at that and kind of breaking that voter block up. Um, you know, I, I, I mentioned this at the GMC debate, but right now you have, uh, April, who's a, uh, uh, independent. And you have Paul, who's a swing vote. Um, and I would also be a swing vote. I would look at the issues holistically and, uh, from all sides and, uh, not go along with just a city staff recommendation. Um, I would really look at it introspectively and, and, and through talking through the community. And that's what I'd bring to the table. Thanks. Oh, wait, do I have time? So I have these, uh, I have these, uh, brochures that you can grab one at the table. I'll be hanging out too, um, uh, just to, just to chat a little bit more.
Mrs. Brown.
Closing argument or whatever you said, statement. Okay, we're not arguing. Okay, are you ready? I'm ready. All right. Thank you again for being here, for listening and loving Gulfport the way I do. I am committed to your community. You have seen my commitment in thirty-five years of volunteering. I believe that volunteer service comes wisdom, inspiration and a unique appreciation for all that is Gulfport. Here, here, I learned to drive a fire truck and responded to midnight calls. I guided Girl Scouts and camped overnight. I attended society meetings, board meetings, committee meetings and trainings. I cheered at Little League and ensured the safety of our children rushing to the egg hunt, the Halloween bash and to see Santa at the, at the tree lighting, which are my three favorite events. I teach our children. I look, work alongside our neighbors. I see the possibilities and I have hope for the future. I'm proud to be part of the tapestry of our interwoven community. Mathematically speaking, we're all, the common denominator of us all is that we both, we all love Gulfport. I know you care about Gulfport because you came here tonight. I'm asking you to trust in the great projects that you see around you and believe in the goodness of Gulfport. For the benefit of our residents, our businesses and our community organizations, it's important for us to continue to maintain our high quality of life by investing in our parks, playgrounds, potholes, property values, preservation people and the priorities that are important to our residents. As your city council member, my goal is to continue to stay the course, respectfully upgrade, responsibly improve and thoughtfully move us forward without losing that defining Gulfport feeling, that sense of community that we have all come to love. Please continue, um, to allow me to serve. When you're filling out your ballot at home, cast your vote for Gulfport. The Gulfport you came here for, the Gulfport you stayed here for and the Gulfport that you call home. Vote for who you know and who you trust. Vote for experience, dedication and qualification. It has been my honor to serve you on the city council for ten years. I want to continue to preserve Gulfport's unique identity, build on our legacy as a full-service city and maintain our low millage rate. Thank you for your commitment to local elections. I appreciate your vote on March fourteenth, which is Pi Day, which is my birthday. Let's do it. I do have cards up there. They're last years, but everything is still true. I changed the date. Thank you.
Mr. Fedovic.
I'll be finished, uh, something that was said earlier. Um, home rule, home rule is a problem for us. Uh, Tallahassee couldn't care less what we think, unfortunately. Uh, we, I tried to, a couple of years ago, tried to ban straws. We tried to ban, ban, ban plastic bags, uh, to save our environment. Uh, and state has said can't do any of that. So home rule is a problem. Uh, my name is, again, my name is Michael Fedovic. I've been your city councilman for ten years. I've had the pleasure of being, uh, endorsed both by the, uh, Police Benevolent Association, our Gulfport Fire Department and, uh, the real estate commission, the real estate board of, uh, uh, Pinellas County. So again, I appreciate your support and their endorsement for those, those three, uh, organizations as well. Um, diverse, be with my diversified, diversification of background. Um, I've been able to look at each issue from a different perspective. And again, I have no agenda. I never have agenda. I've never had one and I have no plans on having one in the future. My main focuses have always been constituent services, what you all need and how we can try to fix the problem if possible. Sometimes it doesn't always work and we both walk away with saying, okay, well, we tried, but it doesn't work. Um, I've also been very big in trying to keep the infrastructure going. And again, I know that's not the sexiest thing in the world, but streets, sidewalks, sewer systems, things we've done a good job on. We're in the process of paving more and more streets on a regular basis. These are things that are important to me because if you don't have a good infrastructure, doesn't matter how, how, how good the roof looks. If the foundation falls in, nothing really matters. So again, I ask for your vote. Um, March fourteenth, I would appreciate your vote, appreciate your support. And if you have any questions, feel, feel free to, uh, talk to me after the, uh, this is over. Thank you very much for coming. Have a great night. Thank you.
Mr. O'Hara.
Well, I'd like to thank the GABR, uh, the city, uh, the audience for coming out this evening. Uh, and also Monroe Rourke, our moderator. Um, my name is Ian O'Hara. I raised my two children here, uh, for sixteen years. Uh, and they've turned out to be fantastic human beings, not because of me, but because of the community that they were raised in. Um, so I'm your community candidate. Uh, I have not sought out endorsements. Uh, what I am doing is I'm seeking clarity, communication and accessibility and listening to members of our community. That's the key. No matter if it's the ones who we disagree with or they disagree with us. Um, I believe I can be, I believe I can be the best at providing you with this particular service. I know all of the voices should be heard and, uh, and number one, my name is Ian O'Hara. I saw, I, I, I seek your endorsement by your vote on March fourteenth.
Mr. Butler Jones.
Thank you. Um, one thing real quick, the diversification of Gulfport, I did say, yes, it's obviously amazing. We have a nice, unique group of people from all walks of life. But that goes back to my cliquey and bringing more unity into Gulfport, bringing those groups together and not just those groups, making us more back into one group. I understand that there are families starting to move into Gulfport. However, if you can tell me what you're gonna take and bring your young kid to do in Gulfport this weekend, child activities and something going on that you don't have to leave the city to go somewhere else and do. I would really like to know because unfortunately there's not a lot here. And that's what I would like to be like, not every festival and activity that we do has to be kid-related because we need a break too. But, and at the end of the day, realistically, it doesn't matter what I would like to do. What matters is what the citizens of Gulfport want. I mean, yes, it would be amazing if we were all on the same page as everyone else. However, the realistically, that's not gonna happen. So my main goal as your city council is to do my best to make sure that all voices are heard. We work together towards a more united Gulfport. I hope to learn more about each and every one of you and what makes you guys weird and unique as well. Also, any problems that you're facing, you guys are my neighbors. I'm proud to live in Gulfport with you. I ask for your vote in the upcoming city council race. And I ask you to remember that if you guys ever need anything, Jonesy's got your back. My cards are out there. That's my personal cell phone number, my email address. Reach out, please. I'd like to talk to you guys.
All right. They, uh, sat up here. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. I was just going to say they deserve that for sitting under these bright lights for an hour and ten minutes. And I'm sure every one of them would be much more comfortable talking to you one-on-one. So, and they've all, um, expressed that they'll be around for a little while. So we wanted to keep this concise to give you that opportunity as well. So those of you that have stuck it out to the end, um, if you have a question for any of them, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to answer it. Thank you all for coming and don't forget to vote. Good night.